Call to order, a meeting of the Lake Mills City Council for February 17th, 2015. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Misty, could you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Fritsch? Here. Mr. Kerkovich?
Here.
Mr. Scharr?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Grundon?
Here.
Corrections and/or approval of the city council minutes of February 3rd, 2015. We hear a motion.
Move to approve is written.
And a second, please.
I'll second it.
Call the vote, please.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Grundon?
I'm staying.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Correspondence. Diane, would you lead us, please?
Yeah, sure. My only correspondence in this last two-week period was concerned by residents in my ward with, again, having truck traffic going down Mulberry Street even though we made the ordinance change to make, take that out of a truck route. Should only be trucks that are delivering to places like Willowbrook in the area, and that message just hasn't gotten out yet. So I'm gonna ask Steve if, has anything, any talk about that in the office?
Yeah, the, between the chief of police and I and the public works director, we found some no-truck signs. We found some no-truck signs that we'll put out, and so there'll be one up at the intersection of Tarnina Park Road and Mulberry and one down at Madison and Mulberry.
Okay. Well, that's good, 'cause that road is just not in condition to handle trucks at this time, and probably never again. But that's for future councils, so. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Steve?
The only thing, I was stopped and asked about, a small subdivision wanted to get city water, but they're actually in the town, so I directed them to go see Hope, but that was it for the last couple of weeks.
Good. Welcome back, Ed.
Thank you.
Mike?
Very quiet week, or a couple of weeks for me, nothing.
Oh, Ed, I'm sorry.
Well, you weren't the only one that realized I was back. Steve, question on, is Madison Street on the 2015 resurface?
Yes.
Okay. Constituent want to ask about that. I had one approach me on the sidewalk on Cook Street where there's no residents that have exact, house sidewalks out to, asking that sidewalk not be put on that side, and we'll be addressing that issue later in the meeting. And then Diane, if you would be so kind as to look at this one, I had an inquiry on it, seeing if it would be prudent to remove the third parking stall in front of the post office. That would be on the corner of Mulberry and Oak. When you come down Mulberry, especially if you're headed out of town away from center city and want to make a left turn, we added a third parking stall, Steve, some time back. There was two, and the post office does have a parking lot, and there's three stalls right out in front, and it'll be from the sidewalk in the front to Mulberry Street. It would be the, there'd still be two left, but wondering if that third one, 'cause it's so tight, if there's a big vehicle parked there to make that turn, so. Something to look into. And that was it. Thank you.
Can I just comment that I'd like to compliment the people who worked on the Knickerbocker Weekend, because the downtown was just a Norman Rockwell painting site. It was just very heartwarming to see all the kids making their snowmen downtown, town, the people working on their ice, people on the lake doing their thing. It was really a fabulous event, and it took a lot of work from a lot of people, but did wanna say kudos to the group.
I agree with that. Very, very nice. And I, too, did not have anything, although I have to admit, I have not been on my email for the last week, so I apologize for that. I will, if there's anything on there, I will answer.
It's quiet on email as well, at least on a general one.
Okay, good, okay. Questions and public comment? The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda unless the item is subject of a public hearing. If your comments pertain to a public hearing, you are asked to hold your comments until that hearing. Public comments may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting had begun. The state open meeting law discourages action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments and fill out and sign the signing sheet as provided on the podium. Anyone? I went through all that for nothing. Okay.
Free speech.
We'll close that, and we'll go to the city manager's report, Steve.
Betsy, do you want to talk about the Ellers Conference and what you did?
Sure. It was last week, I went to a conference that Ellers was hosting, and it was giving a lot of information. They are, of course, our financial advisors. So the first session that I attended was Bonds 101, and then I went to Bonds 102 and received a lot of good information. I really wanna boost up my understanding of how bonds work. We're gonna be doing a bond issue this summer, and I wanna make sure I have a very good handle on how all of that is happening. Later that same day, I attended a part, you know, the, that class had to do with post-issuance compliance. It was offered by an attorney who was giving information to make sure we're all understanding what we have to do once the bond is issued, to make sure we're in compliance with the law. So that was some of the most important things that I took away from, from that training. I had had a conversation with our representative, that Ellers, who was encouraging us to take the bond out sooner rather than later, because they are seeing some indicators that the bond market is gonna not be in our favor. So as soon as we can have everything in place, they're recommending that we move as quickly as possible to take advantage of the better market.
Very good.
Melissa, would you like to comment on Granicus and where we're at?
Sure. We are working with Granicus to go to the paperless packets, so that we can avoid using, going through so much paper and going to iPads. I've started getting the iPads ready, and tonight, Betsy and Steve are both using their iPads to be paperless, and we'll be moving forward, getting you guys trained with yours soon.
Be nice not to have all this paper.
Very nice. And that way, we can make changes as they come up. If something, if we find an error, we can get it corrected right away, and everybody will have it instead of having to wait until the evening of.
Okay, very good.
I'd like to make a comment that the city lost a great friend this weekend, John Nyberg. He was on the library board for 50 years, served the city as city attorney and in several other positions, and so that was a loss to the city. And we want to thank John for all his service. Other than that, I have nothing, other than what I provided you in paper. Any questions?
Counsel? Anyone? No.
Okay.
Okay. We'll move on to item seven, acceptance of committee minutes. I have before me the Lake Mills Housing Authority minutes of the meeting for, from October 28th. That'll go on record. It's red. Council business, boards and committee appointments. I see none. Is that right, Ms.?
That's correct.
Just jump around on me if I do something wrong now. Miscellaneous licenses. We have two. Why don't you go ahead and read those?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
To grant the license that we have in front of us for Leilana Spencer and at this time.
I'll second that. We need to take them separately, Diane.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll go ahead and call the vote on tavern operators license for Leanna Spencer.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
We have one for Donald Chapman.
Okay. I'd like to make another motion. I'd like to make a motion to deny the license because of the applicant's not meeting the statutory qualifications for the tavern operator's license, and I'd like to instruct the city clerk to inform the applicant in writing of the decision of the council.
And a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion? Call the vote, please.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Next on the item is discussion decision on the Franklin Elsie Memorial Bandstand Restoration Project. This is motion 15-2-2-1. Misty, would you?
City council motion 15-2-2-1, approving the restoration plan and accepting the painting and lighting donation from the Franklin Elsie Memorial Bandstand Restoration Committee. Whereas, the city council of the city of Lake Mills pursuant to authority conferred by statutes of the state of Wisconsin has established certain standards and procedures for use of parks within the corporate limits of the city of Lake Mills. And whereas, the city has established a vision for the commons area and desires to maintain this vision. And whereas, the Franklin Elsie Memorial Bandstand Restoration Committee has determined to work with the city on restoring and improving features of the bandstand. And whereas, the Franklin Elsie Memorial Bandstand Restoration Committee, recognizing the value of public parks and recreational activities that promote community health and well-being, has committed to donating over $12,000 to restoring the bandstand. And whereas, the city manager and city staff have reviewed the proposed request, and whereas, the city council has reviewed the information submitted and has considered the information regarding the subject. Be it therefore moved, the 17th day of February 2015 by the city of Lake Mills Council that, section one, that the city manager is authorized to approve the plan and accept the donation by the Franklin Elsie Memorial Bandstand Restoration Committee as set forth in the attached proposal. Section two, that the city manager is authorized to take such actions as necessary to sign the agreement and implement and administer said installation. The city council does hereby authorize the city manager to approve the plan and accept the donation for the Franklin Elsie Memorial Bandstand and authorizes the council president to sign the motion.
We have a motion of adoption of motion 15-2-1?
So moved.
And a second, please.
Second.
And discussion? I think we have representatives from the Restoration Committee? Rob?
Hi, everybody. Rob Getz, Parks and Forestry Director. You all received my memo regarding this in the picture. I'm here representing, Steve wasn't at the last park board meeting, so if you have any questions regarding what the park board decisions were based off of, things like that, that's why I'm here. We have Ann Hunt and Carol Burles here, who sits on the Restoration Committee, so they're more than happy to answer any questions you have regarding, you know, any type of the painting colors, you know, the schemes, the lighting, things like that. So I guess we're here, if you have any questions regarding this, I think it's kind of a no-brainer situation, what we're trying to accomplish here. I think what the committee came forward with is a real good scheme for the bandstand, as far as the color scheme. I think the lighting is gonna be excellent for up there. So overall, I think the starting point of this restoration is gonna be an outstanding start to this whole project. And this is just our beginning step to this long process of getting that shelter back to the way it should be. So if you do have any questions, feel free to ask, you, myself, or Ann or Carol.
I know that the committee had a, literally a step-by-step process, what would make sense to do first and second and third. Is that, did you send that forward, too? I just didn't see it in this package.
That was probably back in December of 2013, when the council originally said, yes, let's go ahead with that. I believe that was part of that process, but a lot of this is gonna be based on how quickly funds can be raised, and the committee has spent a lot of time this last year planning, you know, meetings, fundraising, to get to the point they're at right now, and they would like to see something done to the band shelter to get more interest of what's going on up there. And some of the cheaper cost, but the more effective, is the painting and lighting up there.
Well, I want to thank everybody in the committee for getting this thing started, and I know that we've, we've talked about it as a council up here, because previous councils, I think, maybe have dropped the ball a little bit, so we've added money back in there to start helping with this. We've added money in the budget, because it is city property, just so you guys are aware, you helped kickstart that, so we could actually help fix some of the, some of the issues we already have in there. I don't, I don't know where that's in the process.
Rob's running that.
Yeah, and we're waiting for the weather to get a little bit nicer before we really dig into what needs to be done electrical-wise to begin with underneath, just for the fact that if we're gonna spend a moment of time, let's not rush and, you know, go out in the cold weather and do this quickly. Let's wait for the weather to break, get a little nicer, and let's spend our time and figure out exactly what we're gonna do, and then go ahead with that plan.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that everybody in the committee knew that you helped kickstart that, and we're very appreciative of it, appreciative of your work, 'cause something like that, something like that band shelter should be one of the things that we, as a community, come together and put our money to, and we haven't done very well in the past, so, thank you.
Before you sit down, Rob, we probably should comment on that, 'cause you and I have had this conversation about how it was maintained, and Rob says that all facilities age, and that there has been a lot of work done on that facility over the course of the years, but there are certain features that get to the point where they deteriorated or aren't used in the same fashion that they were, and you let them go to a point where then it's worthwhile bringing it back. And Rob said that, you know, the things that needed to be maintained, the painting, the roof, and all the wood features of it were, were well-maintained. Some of the parts that were concrete that have started to chip, you wait until that gets to a certain point before you start doing something. So it will look rough, and, and it is at a point now where it needs to be looked at, but I don't know that we could say that other councils have dropped the ball. It's more of a, the building is hitting a point in time where it needs to be looked at and maintained. To a certain extent, some of the design features of the building have made it deteriorate faster than we might have originally anticipated, too. Rob was saying that they would, rail, railings that were used to build the flower beds up around the, probably would have been a lot better if they'd used the brick, and there were certain other features that Rob felt would have made that building last longer and be in better shape. So there, there are certain things we, we had discussed, and we'll look at, at making sure we look at in the future.
Well, the biggest thing is that we recognize that is a landmark of the city, and we are taking care of it, so, goes to everyone. Thank you very much on the committee. Did a great job. Thank you, Rob. Any other questions? If not...
I just would like to make sure that the public knows that we still have quite a bit of fundraising left to do. I don't know if you have a dollar amount there, but do you have anything, like ballpark, of what we still need? Okay, if we don't let people know there's a need, they aren't going to give money.
Right, right. And that's a big part of our effort this year. When we began this whole project, it was really kind of a, what would be everything that needs to be done, and how much would that run? And that, if indeed we include especially a rather expensive aspect of it, which would be the construction of a, some sort of a path from the main street to the bandstand in order to preserve the lawn and that sort of thing. It would be approximately $90,000 in total that we'll need. To date, we've fundraised about $15,000, and then the generous support of the community for $10,000 was really kind of a great jumpstart, if you wish to say, for us for this coming year. The electrical work, as Rob had mentioned, will be done, that's all covered by the city contributions. The lighting, that will be a really significant way of showing off the bandstand. The cupola lighting, that's being actually covered by a grant that we had applied for to, through the Arts Alliance, so that's thanks to the Arts Alliance that we'll be able to illuminate the cupola. And then there'll be additional lighting in the, like, the second tier of the roof, and then the painting will be significant, too. And then there'll be a few things that need to be done in conjunction with the painting construction-wise in order to really get a neat effect from the lighting. So in response to your question, we're at about $25,000 of the $90,000 needed.
Okay.
Question. And when you're looking at the lighting, you'll be looking at energy-saving type lighting?
Right, it's LED lighting. We did, if you recall, there was, the first step of the whole project actually began last year, when the city band had contributed. After years and years of being real conservative and saving, we were able to jumpstart the project with the lighting inside the bandstand. And that was really almost a selfish contribution that we had made, because it was to the point where, as the summer progressed and evenings were darker, the lighting was not the greatest for us to be able to read our music. So that really was also another thing that really kind of helped get this whole project going. So that was the first step that we took, and now the community will be able to benefit from more of the renovation that we'll be initiating this year.
Okay.
Thank you, Ann. Misty, would you call the roll, the vote, please?
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Brings us to item D, which is a discussion and decision on the real estate broker services. This is motion 15-2-2-2. Misty, if you would, please.
City council motion 15-2-2-2, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between the city of Lake Mills and Lang Group LLC. Be it moved by the city council of the city of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, as follows. Section one, that the agreement for the purchase of services between the city of Lake Mills and Lang Group LLC for real estate services for years 2015, copies of which are attached heretofore and made a part hereof, is hereby approved. Section two, that the city manager is authorized to execute said agreement and to take such actions as necessary to implement and administer said agreement. Section three, that the city clerk is directed to send a copy of this motion to Lang Group LLC. The city council does hereby approve the agreement and authorize the council president to sign the motion.
And do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second, please.
Second.
Steve, refresh my mind, I can't remember why we put this off.
Well, let me go through the whole process again, because I did receive some questions today about it, and so I'll bring everyone along. Lang had been, worked for the city for probably 13 years in the industrial park as our primary realtor in the industrial park. We'd finally brought that contract to an end in, last December, so it would have been December of 2013, so I should say, two Decembers ago. This year, we purchased the JJ's Barn Grill down on Sandy Beach, Rhode Island, South Main Street, which is 1117 South Main Street. We decided, with the actions that we've been taking with the light and water billing and the parks and recreation billing, 202 Campus Street was now available for sale. And then with the additional purchase of real estate in the industrial park, we decided to put out an RFP for real estate services, and that was authorized, well, I think, in September of this year. The RFP was put out, was advertised, we received one bid, so if you remember in the memo that we had, I didn't go through an RFP review with a committee and try and thin out the applicants, because we only had one. It was submitted, there was some question about charges in the industrial park, and so I was authorized to negotiate with Mr. Lang. We did, he came back with what I believe is a reasonable and fair option in the industrial park. There, so we brought the contract forward again. We received the contract late Thursday afternoon. I think it came in a little bit earlier, but I had been in meetings all day and wasn't able to get to it until late. There are some issues that are still in here, we still have to negotiate, or we still have to set the value of each of the properties that we plan on selling, and that has to go into the, the contract. And then there's some issue around what work is being done as part of the sale of JJ's, because that's a flat fee for $5,000, and so that, that's a rather extensive issue, and we want to make sure that, based on the desires of the council, where you had indicated that you wanted to have that out there for a while and make sure that there was plenty of opportunity to review and buy that real estate, that that was out there, that we just didn't get one, quick one, and have the sale done. So those are some things that we need to still kind of work out with Mr. Lang, but on the basis of a preliminary contract, we're looking at a, it's not an addendum, what is it? It is an addendum to the contract that will finalize all those issues for us, probably coming up at the, later in the year, for the same reasons that Rob mentioned, to make it a little bit warmer and easier to make a determination on what the properties are and what their values are.
And that addendum will come before the council, then?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, well, we have a motion of adoption and a second. Do we have any discussion? If not, Misty, call the vote, please.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Item E, this is a discussion and decision on, on a task order for design and bidding services for the Department of Public Works Building addition and renovation. And I think, before we get started, this, this was part of the budget, capital budget, right?
Yes.
Okay. So Misty, if you'd read that, motion 15-2-3?
City council motion 15-2-2-3, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for design and bidding services from Strand for the Public Works Building project. Be it moved by the city council of the city of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, as follows. Section one, that task order 15-1 for design and bidding services for the addition and renovation of the Public Works Building in the city of Lake Mills with Strand and Associates, copies of which are attached heretofore and made a part hereof, are hereby approved. Section two, that the city manager is authorized to execute said agreement in substantially the same form as attached, and to take such actions as necessary to implement such agreement. The city council does hereby approve the task order 15-1 for design and bidding services for the addition and renovation of the Public Works Building as technical services agreement and authorizes the council president to sign the motion.
And do we have a motion of acceptance?
So moved.
And a second?
A second.
And Steve, for the, for the general public, why don't you just give us a quick synopsis on this?
Well, this is the progression out of the study that we did about three years ago, in which we went through and did an evaluation of certain facilities and made a determination that it would be in our best interest to build a light and water building, which was getting to the point where they needed to expand, and then move Parks and Recreation Department into the existing Public Works Building and remodel the building to meet their needs and accomplish, and accommodate some of the other street issues. We had to kind of do this in a sequence. You have to build the light and water billing first, you have to get to the point where you're moved out of the existing billing, and then you can start remodeling the, the existing Public Works Building. We're at that point now where things are gonna be, where light and water are gonna be moving out of the existing Public Works Building relatively early in the summer, probably June. We would like to be able to start remodeling the existing facility as quickly as possible so that we can get, hopefully, we can get that construction done in this, or at least started in this fiscal year, and completed as soon as possible in the spring of 2016, and have parks and forestry into that building at that time. One of the issues that... One of the issues that was brought forward was bonding and interest rates. The sooner we get the design done, the sooner we have the idea of what our estimates are going to cost, the sooner we can start a bond process, which helps with our interest. So those are two issues here. And so we've been on this process for a long time and worked through that.
Okay. Questions? Discussion?
Just also that this has to take place so that we can put the building on Campus Street on the market and get that producing something downtown.
Yes.
Other discussion or questions?
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion pass five zero.
When do you anticipate this task order will be done?
Well, this task order involves all the design and bidding. So I'm anticipating that we'll go out to bid sometime in mid to late July.
Okay.
Depends on...
But we should have the, we should have the cost estimates before that, won't we?
Yes, before it goes out for bid, we'll have cost estimates.
Sure.
I'm still hoping that June will be the deadline, but I told Betsy to be prepared to go to August.
Item F, discussion decision on accepting additional territory for fire protection, Town of Astalon. This is motion 15-2-4. Misty, would you?
Can we read A right away? Rather than the other, the old one? The one that was on our thing?
Yeah. Okay, that was 4A. Thank you.
You're welcome.
City Council motion 15-2-2-4A authorizing the city manager to negotiate an amendment to an agreement fire contract between the City of Lake Mills and the Town of Astalon for fire services. Be it moved by the City Council of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin as follows. Section one, that the Lake Mills City Council is willing to consider modification to the fire service agreement between the City of Lake Mills and the Town of Astalon, contract dated 10th of December 2003, copies of which are attached hereto and made a part hereof. Section two, that the city manager is authorized to negotiate with the Town of Astalon, Village of Johnson Creek, and the City of Jefferson, an amendment to said territory, and it takes such actions as necessary to prepare said amendment for council consideration. Section three, that the city clerk is directed to send a copy of this motion to the Astalon Town Clerk. The city council does hereby authorize the city manager to negotiate an amendment to the fire services agreement between the City of Lake Mills and the Town of Astalon and authorizes the council president to sign the motion.
Do we have a motion of adoption?
So moved.
And a second, please.
I'll second.
Discussion, let's see, we have the chief here and Steve?
Yes, and we also have a representative from the Town of Astalon, Mr. Cool.
Okay.
He'd like to be able to just talk to you for a minute, if you could.
Sure. If we want to relax the... Make that motion. And second?
I'll second.
Call the vote, please.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Motion pass five zero.
David Cool, N 6066 Zimmerman Lane, Jefferson, supervisor for the Town of Astalon. I guess I'm here just to, if you have any questions to address, to try to address those. We are coming to you by request from some of our citizens, asking why Jefferson serviced this area when Lake Mills was faster to get to it and could respond in a more timely manner. So that is why the board is here. There have been other things going on, we have made some changes. That also has been, some of it by citizen request. And this is also part of the citizen request is to move these four sections. I don't know, I hate to disagree with Mr. Wilkie, but I think it's said in there that is that serviced by, did you have internet service by Jefferson EMS? Because I believe this area that you, that we're asking, requesting that you look at is now serviced by Lake Mills EMS and has been, by the EMS map that I looked at, that we have anyways.
Yeah, it's been Jefferson Fire Department.
It's been Jefferson Fire, but Lake Mills EMS.
And that I couldn't answer to, I don't know which EMS service covers.
Yeah, we're not gonna, we're not gonna speak for Lake Mills EMS, they're gonna have to... No, no, I'm just saying, I thought in there it may have said...
And it may.
And I just wanted to clarify that, that is, it is now. And I understand, I guess, everybody's different, I understand that. When we've been talking with Johnson Creek, they prefer, they have their EMS and fire tied together. And I guess that's just another thing, if down the road at some point, if, you know, things get tied together, their EMS and fire practice together. So this, to me, would just make another, make another reason to make more sense if some point down the road you combine, you are working together, you have the same service area. So if anybody didn't have any other questions, I just wanted to relay that. I appreciate you looking at it and hope you gave us the opportunity to talk with Steve. And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve?
I think I laid it out in the memo. I believe that there are a lot of issues here. First, probably the first one that I think Rick and I agree on, and that I've had discussions with both Johnson Creek and Jefferson is, is that this area is best served by Lake Mills. I don't think that there's any doubt about that. I actually think that there are some parts of the Town of Astalon that would be better served that are going to be given to Johnson Creek, that would be better served by the City of Lake Mills. I also understand that there are a lot of issues here between three fire departments and all their relationships and that there are different considerations about service, mutual aid, benefits of paid on premises, paramedic ambulance services, water services, those types of things that get involved here and are difficult to articulate or consider under these types of conditions. I haven't, I haven't had the time to sit down and go through it. There was a request that came in from Mr. Burrow on Tuesday at noon, and he asked me to consider it. He asked me to put it on this agenda as soon as possible. Actually, he wanted it a little bit earlier, but this was as soon as I felt comfortable putting it on an agenda. I guess from that standpoint, I looked at it and said, I think that there are some issues here that we still need to work out and think about. I don't, I don't want to go out and create issues with Jefferson Fire Department or Johnson Creek Fire Department. I also want to understand Lake Mills EMS issues and those types of things. I don't see it as being a service problem for us. It's not like there are going to be all kinds of additional calls that we can't service. To a certain extent, I think we're probably already responding in mutual aid situations on most of them anyways. But I still think that there are serious service considerations that need to be worked out and considered as we continue to move forward with this. And I had conversations with the chief, and I think that we felt that we really would like to sit down with all the parties and be able to say, okay, what are the conditions that we're going to have to deal with here? And work from there.
Certainly sounds reasonable. Chief, do you have anything to add?
What Steve says will be discussed.
Okay. Thank you. Discussion? Call the vote? Call the vote, please.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Motion pass five zero.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Cool.
Item G, this is a discussion and decision on a bid award contract, 1-15 Street and Utility Reconstruction. And this goes for the Browns Court and Cook Street Circle Drive and Circle Drive. This is motion 15-2-5. Misty, if you would, please.
City Council motion 15-2-2-5 authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the Browns Court, Cook Street, Circle Drive, Contract 1-2015. Whereas the City Council of the City of Lake Mills has authority over the maintenance of rights of way within the City of Lake Mills, and whereas the City Council advertised to receive bids for street and utility reconstruction on Browns Court, Cook Street, and Circle Drive, Contract 1-2015, and whereas the City Council has reviewed the information submitted and has considered the information regarding the subject. Be it moved by the City Council of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin as follows. Section one, that the low bid received from Forest Landscaping and Construction, W 8583 County Road S, Lake Mills, Wisconsin, 53551, for Browns Court, Cook Street, and Circle Drive Reconstruction, Contract 1-2015, in the amount of $500,591, is hereby approved and accepted. Section two, that the city manager and city clerk are authorized to execute all agreements and to take such actions as necessary to execute said bid. The city council does hereby award Browns Court, Cook Street, and Circle Drive Reconstruction, Contract 1-2015, in the amount of $500,591, to Forest Landscaping and Construction, W 8583 County Road S, Lake Mills, Wisconsin, 53551, and authorizes the council president to sign the motion.
Do we have a motion of adoption?
So moved.
And a second, please.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, Mr. President, I would, I guess, throw it out to the rest of the council. If we look on page two of Steve's memo, we have the alternatives. In that, none of the houses actually come out on the east side. Do we really need to have included in this the east side without a sidewalk? With a sidewalk, rather. We could go with the option of not putting a sidewalk in on the east side. There is this existing sidewalk on the west side. And Steve and I, I talked to Steve earlier about that. Steve, you want to comment back on that, what we had? Steve said certainly that's one way to go, and that you would prefer to see the sidewalk. But there is no homes, or no homes that directly go out on that street.
Obviously, from my standpoint, I don't, I'm not as concerned about how they're paid for special assessment or directly by the city through, this is technically budgeted completely through the city's capital projects. Because at the time it was done, we thought there were sidewalks on both sides. So we didn't anticipate any special assessment. That being said, based on the information we have now, we have to, the city's policies require that we go through the special assessment process unless you guys pick another option. I believe that sidewalks on both sides have benefits. When we do a special assessment, the information provided by the engineer doesn't even really mention pedestrians, it mentions all kinds of other benefits that we use in order to be able to special assess. That being said, this is one of those cases where there's, in my opinion, a debate as to the special assessment process in that the sidewalk doesn't benefit the homeowner to the extent that it benefits other people walking through the area. Because the homeowners already face College in Fremont and have access to sidewalks and generally the city sidewalk system circulation. It would be a benefit to people moving north and south along Cook Street, which is only one block long. One of the bigger issues is probably that it's so close to the middle school that, I know that I've parked on that street probably 15, 20 times for music events and sporting events at the school. And so it's always been, you know, an area where there are a lot of people moving back and forth through, but not necessarily the homeowners. So if we put a sidewalk in, it would be something where, you know, special assessing it may not be at the highest level of anticipation. But obviously, the council has the right to look at it and say, hey, one sidewalk is enough, or that we are going to pay for it out of the capital improvement fund, or we're going to bill it and special assess it, that's fully within your options. But I think that probably the strongest argument that we have here in either two or three is that those houses do not face that street. And so the use of that sidewalk for the homeowners has less benefit, and probably almost none. They will get a substantial corner discount anyways.
Does the Forest Landscaping bid include the sidewalks?
Yes.
Are we able to take the sidewalks out and the bid be reduced?
Yes. We wouldn't know tonight, but that would be a change order we'd work on as soon as...
We legally could?
Yeah. Yeah, that's no problem.
I have one concern that I would like, I would not mind considering not putting sidewalks on that side. However, we also have a sue happy world today. And I think before I would be willing to do that, I would like to have neighbors in the surrounding area sign off a statement saying they agree that there should not be sidewalks there, I don't want to get a lawsuit later. After we've done that, from another neighbor down the road who says, well, you didn't put one there, I don't want one either. And I think if the neighbors are in agreement and nobody's complaining, I don't have a problem. But if we get one neighbor who says, wait a minute, no, that's not fair, I got to do my corner and my other side, they should too. So if we can get a concurrent, some neighbors that they agree, I know some already do, but if all of them do, you've got my vote, too.
I guess, what is, you're looking to cut the cost, is that what?
Well, it seems, I'm just questioning, are we putting sidewalks on when there's no front door going out to the sidewalk? You know, and is that...
Yeah, but Steve brought it up pretty good there, because...
Do we still, you know, do we have the sidewalk down there? Do we need to really put a sidewalk in there, you know, and spend the taxpayers' money to put a sidewalk?
We do have other sidewalks in the city who, that do not go past the front door. Especially when it's a north and south street. Because a lot of our streets are east and west, and when you only have two things, if you drive through town, we have other sidewalks that go past sidehouses. So it's not, you know, I think, like I said, I think we have to make sure that we have agreement in that neighborhood if you, and if we need to go door to door to get that, I guess that's what we'll have to do. I prefer to wait another month or two, weather-wise.
It's city property, so it's, you know, whether, whether or not they can legally sue, they probably can't. However, you know, and, you know, I'm probably one of the biggest people that don't like sidewalks being put in and special assessed.
Exactly.
I don't like that. However, comma, the sidewalk is in close proximity to a school. And that is one of the, one of the benchmarks that we use when we decide when we're going to put, where we're going to put the sidewalks in. However, comma, this whole process went through without any homeowner's input, any public input. You know, we just assumed that were sidewalks there, and we were going to go ahead and replace them or do whatever we were going to do in the contract. So, you know, I'm sorry, but I like option one, put the sidewalk in, do not assess the homeowner.
Yeah. I'd have to agree with you, you know, just because, well, let's put it this way, the only time I use my sidewalk in front of my house is when I have to get the snow off of it. The rest of the neighborhood, they use it all the time. So I don't look at it as a benefit for the homeowner as much as it is for the keeping the kids off the streets and the safety of the other people. And we've already, it's already budgeted for, we're not special assessing on it. How much would we save? How much will we get back that we could use somewhere else? Probably negligible.
$1,200, $1,300?
Yeah.
Steve, it says option one requires a modification... Steve, it says option one requires modification. What does that mean?
We, our policy right now requires that we special assess, and it would still be possible for us to go through the whole special assessment process and meet all the legal requirements. So that, that isn't, isn't an issue, but for us to not special assess, we would have to sit down and discuss why we weren't special assessing, and then kind of see if that blended into the existing policy, or how we would blend it into the existing policy by modifying it. And so, well, you could do it easily here today and say, we're not going to do it. By the time we got there, we would need to have some good logical reasoning behind why we didn't do it. There are situations and I-
It was our mistake.
Well, it was my mistake. There's no wide receiver in this one. The-
Very good.
There are some conditions, though, in my opinion, throughout the city that are similar to this, and we already discussed this. These houses don't face it. We have another one on Tyranina Park Road where all the houses face the other street, so they've paid for sidewalk on the other side.
The back of their lots, right?
And that, well, the house's front faces, I think, Cass Place. The backside of the house faces east Tyranina Park Road, and some of them even have sidewalk on Topeka. And so here you have people who are going to get assessed on all different edges for sidewalks that, again, they may or may not use, and in my opinion, there are definitely some underlying conditions here that we need to think about as to why we special assess them. We're already giving a fifty percent, a fifty-foot corner credit. You know, under certain conditions, we might think that we give a full corner credit.
So I guess maybe that's something, something else we need to look at. We have the powers to change that policy on special assessing.
It's a resolution, it's a policy by resolution, it's easy to change.
Yeah.
I would recommend-
Maybe that's something we would look at. It won't help the people that have already been special assessed, but, you know, I'd be willing to look at it.
I would recommend that you do deal with the special assessment policy and take a look at whether or not there's room to adjust it for circumstances such as this. The flip side of that would be to start the special assessment process. That's where you can get input from the neighborhood as well as from the affected property owners, and you could do them simultaneously, but if you really are not considering doing a special assessment, you may want to just look at your policy. I read the policy last week when we discussed this in the office, and there is currently no wiggle room. That doesn't mean that there isn't under case law or under the statutory procedures for special assessment. We could probably make some cases for why it would be okay to skip these folks on special assessment, but unfortunately, the council has in the past been hamstrung by its special assessment policy and not following it when somebody is suing on special assessment. I could see if you just ignore your policy and go about your business, two, three years down the road, you may have somebody who dredges that up, that you did not follow your policy for them, so why are you bothering to follow your policy for me? That is the only context in which I would be concerned about opening the door to possible litigation. We have to be fair within the, each special assessment, but a court has listed in the past in Jefferson County in a City of Lake Mills assessment case that you have to follow your policy. And so I think, just as a good housekeeping, you'd want to take care of it now while it's fresh in your mind, rather than worry later on when somebody dredges it up that you didn't follow your policy, and use that as reason for disputing their special assessment. So we could put it on the agenda shortly and deal with it then.
I, there, all the times we have not put sidewalk in to date have been for design issues. When we did Ferry and we didn't put sidewalks on both sides of Ferry, some of it had to do with the slope of the street, and the slope of the street needed to be readjusted to be able to get the sidewalk in because there are excessive slopes on part of the east side of Ferry Drive, and so we didn't do it there. We didn't do it on both sides of Marguerite because there was a house, there was a garage at the bottom, there was a historic garage, and we didn't want to have, we had to figure out how to get through the garage. In fact, the gentleman sat on the Public Works Board, do you remember what his name was? Anyways, his garage, we would have to have gone through, and there were several other really steep slope issues that we couldn't resolve with the way the street was currently designed, and so we passed up on that. So most of the streets that we have passed on, when we've done those types of projects, have been design issues, not concept issues. The one case that I know of is Slinger, and Slinger put sidewalks on one side, and then the one side sued to have the other side shovel the sidewalk on every other time, and the judge ultimately ended up telling the city, until you have sidewalks on both sides, you're responsible for cleaning the sidewalks. They eventually got sidewalks on both sides.
So a question on this, if we, the resolution's accept the Forest bid, then does, how's that handle the sidewalk? Does that come with special assessment?
It doesn't really, but when, if we put the resolution on the next time, well, it's going to do one thing, if you guys say you want to do it through option one tonight, then what we're going to do is we're going to bring the special assessment resolution forward for work. If you don't, if you select, I think it's two.
Do nothing.
Which, whichever one requires that the, whichever one requires a special assessment-
Three.
As soon as three, if you select three, then what, then Vicki and I will start the special assessment process tomorrow. So it must be two, that's, if you select that one, then we put in the sidewalk and just run it through as existing process, and we modify, is that one? Then we modify the resolution to make a determination on why we did that.
Can I ask a question on the way the reconstruction is set up? Is it set up for parking on both sides of Cook Street?
Cook Street is one block long, it's a narrow street. In fact, I think she mentioned before that it was an alley. It does have parking on both sides, so it can get pretty congested on that street, and the buses use it every single day of school. So it does have a lot of traffic on it.
Are we, by our reconstruction that we are doing, are we tying ourselves into parking on two sides, or could we look at parking on one side so that people can get through Cook Street? I have been told by people living there in the area that it sometimes impassable.
And I can understand that, it would definitely would drop down to one lane under a lot of conditions. Reconstruction doesn't restrict parking at all.
Okay, so we could revisit that at a later date?
Right.
Okay.
The reconstruction, the debate would be that we left the street the same width as it currently is.
Okay.
So it's, it's really just a little over, well, it's a three-lane street, so it's really designed for parking on one side and then two travel lanes.
Okay, thank you.
Help me out again. If we approve this resolution motion, all we're doing is approving the bid.
Correct.
With the sidewalk.
With the sidewalks. And special assess or no special assess?
If you tell us to bring the resolution back for modification, it's no special assess. If you tell us that-
Well, option one says, this option means the sidewalk will be built and no special assessed.
Yes, and we have to mod, and it says that there's a modification that'll be required, and that's to modify the special assessment resolution, which isn't difficult. We can come back at the next meeting and have that done.
Well, it could be difficult. I mean, we have to change how we special assess.
Only in this one example, this one case?
Conditions, what conditions we special assess, but we did that in two thousand and one. When I came, we changed our special assessment practices.
We're not talking citywide, we're just talking about this one case, right?
No, we're talking citywide. We're talking theoretically why we would not special assess these types of conditions. That's why I mentioned that there are lots of areas here that we should be looking at, like Cass Place and those types where there's unusual situations that need to be considered, and this could be one-
We're not talking blanket-wise, we're talking specific cases, right?
Yeah, they're more, it's not that we're not special assessing, but there, but there are certain conditions where we should be able to stop and say, hey, this, maybe we shouldn't special assess these sidewalks.
Actually, your motion tonight would only be awarding the contract to Jason Forrest, and we could decide at a future date to not construct the sidewalk, and then a-
Change order.
Change order would be done. So then the contract would still be awarded, but that change would be made. So you don't have to, this is, this motion isn't set up for you to pick option one, two, three, or four, you're just awarding the contract.
Okay.
And we can, if any of you want to ask to put something on an agenda for next time, one way or another as to how you want to resolve this, we can take care of it that way, because any one of you have the power to put anything on the agenda.
Sure.
I'd like to call the question. I'm calling the vote on the motion.
Well, I'll do that one. Any other discussion?
That's a privileged motion, you can't discuss it.
Right, you just take the roll.
Take the roll, please.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion pass five zero.
Okay. Well, it's good to see somebody from town got a bid finally. Item H, this is discussion and decision on the dam design. Steve.
It's pretty much very consistent with what we've seen before from our engineer, Warren Hayden. He provided plans, they pretty much follow what he had discussed before in all forms and fashions. There's some more detail on the spillway, but it's still pretty much in the same form it was there. And so he will be working, this is, we're at about ninety percent complete on the plans, but this allows us to, unless there's some substantial issue there, this allows us to get it out for bids as quick as possible. You still have the right to accept or reject the bids. The one item that I did want to note, we are using the Arts Alliance fence-
Okay.
-that we took down to go around the spillway. We're going to have to design more, and so there were some proposals. We have these pieces here that we have, and then they were looking at changing some of the designs around it, so do you have any preferences on that?
Well, I had a question on that, Stephen. My question was, why do we need to go with a decorative fence rather than just a commercial fence? If you design it right so that you have the Arts Alliance fence be the highlight, you know, that's prominent, and then just going with a regular black wrought iron fence for the rest of it, to save on the cost?
Uh, and that-
The Arts Alliance fence was in the thousands of dollars, I mean, that was not a cheap-
No, it was inexpensive.
It was not a fence, it was a piece of art-
Right.
-that served as a fence, and met all the requirements of a fence, but it was a piece of art, and still is a piece of art when it goes back up. I just don't see continuing that expense for the rest of the fence, you know, when we can have a nice-looking wrought iron fence that would, would augment it.
And I'm not going to, I'm not going to argue that point. The issue that I think we have is, is that I don't think that there's, the way that the spillway is done, and as you're coming around the spillway here, to be able to change the design to a more standard fencing, you, it wouldn't match up, and it would, it would not present in the same form or fashion that's there, so I guess we were trying to make sure that, in our discussions, that, that we continue to present a good image in that area and that it looked nice, but that, if you guys don't want to do that, that's fine with me.
I have a question on the diagram. So the circular ones are the ones that are currently, that we currently have?
Yes, these ones in the middle.
Not the angular ones? Not the ones that look like triangles?
Right.
Okay. I, are, are we, are you asking us, should we continue going with the circles, or what are you asking us?
That's what I'm asking, is there any design concepts that you prefer? I've already heard from Ed that he would prefer just to go with a standard fence, but that's kind of what's being presented here, is we have the Arts Alliance fence, it provides a certain amount of fencing along the edge. I think to a certain extent that we felt that it, it didn't carry through.
How many feet of fencing do we currently have from the Arts Alliance fence? Just generally, like, rough, rough, um, well?
About sixty feet.
About sixty feet, and how many is there total?
How much are we going to need total?
Total.
Probably a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty.
So again, as many?
Yes.
I personally would like to have a chit-chat with the people in the Arts Alliance about this before I tell you what I think, because, you know, we've already spent a chunk of money to make it look nice, and I'd like to know what their feeling would be now, and maybe we can do what Ed said, but do it with something that's aesthetically pleasing. I don't want just a chain link fence that defeats the purpose of having it pretty, the pretty fence. But there might be a pretty fence out there that's not as expensive as this is.
That was my point, Diane. Mine wasn't, I wasn't referring to a chain link fence. I'm thinking of, when you drive through our community or other communities and you see black wrought iron fences that are not chain link, they may date back a hundred years old even, but they're beautiful.
Like the ones at the Fargo Mansion?
Yeah, they're beautiful fences.
Could, do we have to have an answer for this tonight?
No, we're only at ninety percent, so this is an issue that could lay, and you could, I think that we're going to want sometime in late March to know, because we're going to try and probably have bids done then and be, you know, get our bids back in mid-April.
We're, on that, that plate you had up before with the overhead of the system-
The railing concept?
Yeah, right, yeah, that one there. Where, now where is railing going to go, actually going to go?
It's going to come around like this.
Well, there's, on both areas or the inside?
Yes. There are certain areas here that are, it, it kind of slopes-
Are there different levels, levels? Different levels?
Yes, they kind of, this kind of slopes up, and so any area that was of a drop-off of a certain distance, he wanted to have fence around. It doesn't go all the way around, but it, it does kind of follow this stone wall area here.
Do you-
I guess I'm having a real hard time visualizing this.
Why we have to have a double fence? Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, and then exactly how it's going to, is it, is it this dark area on the other side, or is it going to be on the outside of those stones, or?
It'll be probably right along with those stones.
Okay.
And it'll follow along that way, and basically what you have is a drop-off, and so it's trying to keep you from falling off into that ditch. And as it moves this way, gets, this is the deepest spot, and then as it moves this way, it gets shallower and shallower, and so the fencing ends about here, and then you can actually walk into this area here from the end.
Well, I'm, I might be wrong, but I would think that the fencing that's going to be most visible is the highest fence.
Yeah, it's on the outside, Diane.
The outside one.
Yeah.
The outside one would be the most visible, and that would be the one where we would want to use our pretty fencing.
Yep.
Maybe the one on the lower level can be what Ed was saying, just something that's not that, of that nature, but just, just to do the job.
Technically, there is no lower level, I mean, it's running up a slope and then it goes across the end. It's not-
There's two fences.
It's not a double fence, it's a single fence.
No, it's not a double fence.
No?
No, it's not a double fence. It runs, it's on both sides of the ditch, and it runs up the slope and then comes across and-
You've got to look at the other one, the one ahead of that one, Diane.
Ahead of this one?
Yeah. And just, you can see the line on the outside. It says rail.
Okay, so it is only one fence?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, here, you can see it right here.
Steve, is the, the width of the dam and everything stays the same as it was when we first approved it, correct?
Yes. Technically, you didn't approve it at the last meeting. You reviewed it and said that it was a good concept, but you didn't actually make a decision to approve it. Tonight, you would be doing that, you're approving the 90% design, so that we can go out for bids. You will have the final approval of the contract award.
And we have the, obviously going out for bids, we have the cost estimate on it.
Yes.
So I have a couple of questions for both Steve and Vicki. I was actually at the American Legion meeting earlier this month, and it was brought up that we're opening this back up again, or we're planning to open this back up again. And that brought up some questions and concerns that I didn't feel very comfortable answering at the time, as far as responsibilities, liabilities, things like that. Now, I believe it was my understanding, the American Legion plot was granted to the American Legion?
We sold it to the American Legion for a very minimal amount on a 99-year sale that basically said as long as it was a legion, they could keep it.
So the, the spots that we're planning on opening up, we already have easements, all the other stuff on that, obviously. So, because they were concerned, obviously first, a lot of them didn't know that we were planning this. But secondly, their biggest concern is any liability that they would have as a legion if anybody was hurt in there.
I know that, that it's our easement. It's our dam, so we have liability. As far as their liability-
It's always very fact-dependent on what exactly happened and who maybe could have avoided something happening. So we can't really say before the fact, no, you would absolutely not have any liability, because they own the land, but we have the easement. We certainly wouldn't be deciding something to foster anybody being hurt. But, you know, they could have a function there. It could be something that the American Legion is doing that causes somebody to be injured. So we can't say ahead of time without having any kind of fact situation at all, that no, you would never have any liability. But we, because it's our dam, it's our design, and it's built in our easement, we would certainly have the most grounds for being found liable, if anybody's liable at all. Sometimes things happen, and there is no negligence.
The one that I can think of is, is you have people standing around, and they shoot off a cannon.
Sure.
And someone jumps back and stumbles and falls into the, now the fence should prevent that, but there, there could be a situation where they would be at the right spot, and they could fall in, and then both of us would be liable, probably. If they were out there screwing around and they fell in, it's probably our, but-
And if somebody intentionally jumped in, well, then maybe it's not ours, unless someone can fashion an argument for why we're still at fault, even though somebody intentionally did something. So it's, it's very hard to guess ahead of time before you have the facts in front of you as to where there'd be liability and where there wouldn't, but certainly, they, you know, if they have concerns, they can come and address it with the city manager.
Yep, no problem. I just didn't feel right answering anything until I talked, and this was a good point to ask you guys, so thank you.
And if liability is the issue, and we're concerned about that, then we should leave it the way it is now, because it has less liability than anything we're looking at.
Well, the whole, the whole issue, we're opening this up, is to get us down in a lower tax bracket, insurance bracket.
Right, but the aesthetic way we're doing it has to do with people wanting to have this looking nice. But it also does open up issues of others' types. So can't have your cake and eat it too.
That's true. And do we even have any statistics behind anybody getting injured in it prior? What are we, I don't know what those statistics are.
Actually, do you know, is, is there another dam similar, even close to like what this would look like? Somewhere in the state Midwest somewhere?
I'll go see it.
Anywhere. Road trip. I'm just, yeah, just kind of curious.
I, I don't know. I would have to ask Warren.
And historically, within the community, I'm not aware of anybody, at least in the last 21 years, being injured. And the old spillway, when it still existed, was much more dramatic than this one will ever be.
I agree.
Yeah, if you look on the cross-section, it's not, it's not a-
Yeah, the chances of something happening don't outweigh the potential benefits that we as a community gain, both aesthetically and financially, I guess.
I agree. So where does that leave us with our thoughts?
Do we have a motion up on this? I don't see it.
Do we need one?
Hasn't been read yet?
I know I made one. She must have picked it out. Sorry, I didn't get it in there.
Okay, so what's your ask?
You can just make a motion to approve the 90% drawings, and then with the condition that we bring back fencing options.
Sure. Somebody like to make that motion?
So moved.
In a second.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Mr. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Motion pass five zero.
Item I, Resolution 15-5, I just had before me. This is the city manager's compensation. Let me see, would you read that?
Resolution 15-05, City Manager Compensation, whereas the City Council of the City of Lake Mills has heretofore entered into an agreement with the city manager that calls for an annual performance evaluation and an annual review of the city manager's compensation. And whereas the council has met in closed sessions for the purposes of conducting the performance evaluation and a compensation review of the city manager, and now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Lake Mills hereby agrees to compensate the city manager retroactive to January 1, 2015, with an annual salary of $89,465 to be paid in 26 pay periods over the course of the 12-month period of service to the City of Lake Mills during 2015. And be it further resolved that the compensation increase represents the same 1% increase given in 2015 to other full-time city employees. Be it further resolved that a half percent bonus shall also be paid to the city manager in December 2015, and this bonus is made possible because no premium payment is required for the income continuation insurance made available to city employees during 2015.
Is there a motion of adoption?
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a, just a point of clarification. The salary listed is not just for the city, but it's also your work as the utility person? What's the percent breakdown on that? Roughly? Roughly?
Well, it's 45, 55. 45 general fund and 55 utilities.
So city, the city manager only without the utility. Can you hit numbers? Do you have a calculator?
How much the city pays for me is about $58,000, including all health and-
$58,000?
That includes the benefits.
And benefits. And then the other of the 90 would be the utility pays for. So just a clarification for the public that, you know, we, if we did not have a city utility, you would not be paying this amount for your city manager, because he also does the work for that as well, so.
Anything else?
And just want to reiterate that it is a 1% increase, which is the same as the other employees in the city. So clarification.
Call the vote, please.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion pass five zero.
Okay. Item nine, recommendations for future agendas, and I guess we will put that special assessment on the agendas, on the agenda?
Sidewalk assessment?
Sidewalk assessment.
It is a special assessment policy because it does cover a much broader range, but that would be the key item we'd look at.
Anything else? Diane, got anything?
No.
Okay, item 10, convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85, paragraph 1G, conferring with legal counsel who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or likely to be involved. Do I hear motion?
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
Call or roll, please. Vote.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Grundon?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Motion pass five zero.
And we will meet in closed session after a quick recess.